Our meeting in order, we're going to invite, I'm going to invite Dr. Ashley Drake Mertz up. She's with Grace First Presbyterian Church here in Weatherford. She's going to lead some prayer. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me. You always give me the doctor title and I'm not a doctor, but I appreciate it. No, I appreciate the extra accolades.
Man in my eyes, you're just that good.
Yes, you can see the future. Let us pray. Grant, oh God, that your holy and life-giving spirit may so move every human heart that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatreds cease, that our divisions being healed, we may live in justice and peace. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in this city your spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all your people. In all we do, we seek to honor and glorify you and all you have created. Amen.
Thank you. You know forever now, I'm going to call you the doctor.
Yes, well, it can be, it can be a standing joke, but for everyone else, it could probably be noted.
Thanks again for being here, appreciate it. It's 6:30 PM, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to call the meeting in order and announce we do a quorum present. Mr. Tiscus is not with us this evening, if you can note that in the minutes. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Mayor Pro Tim Wilder is going to lead us in those.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you for that. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hotop?
Just wanted to mention, our friends over at Weatherford College will be hosting the Taste of Parker County at Heritage Park on Thursday. It'll be from five to eight in the center lot there, and that's, that's a chance to sample 28 Parker County cuisines all in one spot. It's a really cool, popular event.
Do have a nice break in the rain, too. So it'd be a great evening for that. Counsel, items of community interest, anything from y'all?
No, sir.
Hearing none, let's move to item five on the agenda, presentations and proclamations. Five A is to receive a presentation from Commissioner Larry Walden regarding the Parker County Sheriff's Posse Annual Rodeo and Trail Drive, and I believe you're joined tonight by Doug Leeper, too. Gentlemen, come on up. Mr. Harris is here, too, didn't want to leave you out.
Well, thank you for the invitation. We, we heard there's going to be a rodeo in a couple of weeks.
I sure hope so.
But I think y'all have already heard this show, but it's a little bit more than just rodeo. And we, we had a proclamation at Commissioner's Court this past Monday proclaiming Frontier Days in Parker County. And Frontier Days consists of a, of a cattle drive, street dance, bulls, bulls, Extreme Bulls, four more days of rodeo, and the youth livestock show. And the participation is significant. We, we guess somewhere in the 50,000 range for all of the events, but we want to take a little bit of time and share that with you. And the first thing I want to do is introduce Doug Leeper. Doug Leeper is the captain of Parker County Sheriff's Posse, and he's going to speak in just a second here, but we want to talk about the individual events, and we want to talk about the importance of the city of Weatherford to those events. So we begin on the fifth day of June with a cattle drive, reenacting a cattle drive from years past, starts in downtown Millsap. We're going to have breakfast for everybody that wants to come, starting at 6:30 until we run out of food. After that, we're going to drive cattle from Millsap up Green, up Old Millsap, up Greenwood Road, and wind up at the posse for lunch, and everybody's invited for lunch. We'd like to have you around 12 o'clock, but it'll be whenever we get the cattle here. The, the, the second part of that day is we have something that is only possible with cooperation of the city of Weatherford, and that is our, our parade in downtown. And we did this last year, Mayor.
I know, I was nervous.
We're going to do it again.
Let's do it.
We drove, we're going to drive cattle from the ninth grade center, right up South Main Street, around the courthouse, and we'll wind up pinning those cattle up at the railroad track on North Main. And it adds so much to our parade, we've got to have it, and we've got to have people here to see it. But we couldn't do that without, without our permit man back here, Michael Howard, and, and the, the law enforcement. It is such a big deal, we recognize that. We know on Saturday night at 5:30 when we have that parade, it takes a lot to get those officers out there to assist, and we are very, very appreciative of the city of Weatherford for allowing us to do these events. And I told you we'd do it last year successfully, and we did, we will again this year, too. We'll finish that at 8 o'clock that night with a street dance, which three years ago we brought back to downtown Weatherford. And in cooperation with the Weatherford Downtown Business Association, we will have a street dance there, corner of York and Dallas, on the, on the, on the county's lot there, beginning at 8 o'clock that night. Rowdy Decker is going to be there. It's a great, everybody needs to come out for that. Fast forward then, well, the stock show, the youth livestock show starts on that Saturday the 5th as well, carries on until about the next Saturday when they have their sale. It'll be ongoing out at the, the stock show facility. Then on, on Tuesday, two weeks from tonight, 7:30 PM, we'll begin our rodeo with the Extreme Bulls. That night is all bulls, all night long, dance and band after that. Doug's going to pick up there and talk about the rest of the rodeo.
And then after, after each night of performance, we have a band. Tuesday night, we have Win Williams, he's actually a Weatherford boy. Wednesday night, I believe it's Jacob Bryant. Thursday night is Chris Colston. Then we hit Friday night with Randall King, Saturday night with Josh Ward, and those will be our big nights. PRCA rodeo starts Wednesday night, and that's when we'll start our grand entries. So Mayor, you're, we'll have a horse for you. You can ride with us in the grand entry.
Only if it's carried by a stick.
So that, that will go on through Saturday night, and we, like Larry said, we appreciate everything you do for us, and we're, we're proud to put the rodeo on, we look forward to it.
We're certainly looking forward to it, gentlemen, and I think I said this in previous years, but the Parker County Sheriff's Posse, the role that it's played in our county in, in keeping us what we want to be, and keeping the heritage and the hospitality in a small town, this is one of the best weeks in Parker County, and surely absolutely one of the best weeks in Weatherford, Texas. So thank y'all for everything you do, and I'll be out there every night, so cooking those cheeseburgers for Lions Club.
Two things I have to add.
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
There are lots of people that work together, the cooperation among all the groups, and, and one of the reasons why we've worked hard to bring everybody together is because there was a little bit of a disconnect, we felt a few years ago. And so we think that we have made the corner on that one, and I guarantee you, we had the, the first cattle drive two years ago, your mayor rode the whole way.
I sure did.
And he just, we're going to set him up this time, he's going to ride in a different way this time, so we'll set him up, he's going to ride the wagon, and he will be in that cattle drive. I would invite any of you, if you, if you've never been, we are one of the best of our size outdoor rodeos anywhere, anytime, and it's a great show. We're going to have some special things Friday night and Saturday night that you'll want to come and see, but it is a good event, and we really appreciate the cooperation that you bring, that you bring to us, that Michael brings to us, and everybody, Lance Arnold, everybody that's involved, because we could not have it without all of those other people, all of the city, and all of the other organizations that are part of it. So thank you very much.
How about a round of applause for the Parker County Sheriff's Posse? Thank you, gentlemen. Five B on the agenda is receive a presentation from the Tarrant Area Food Bank. Welcome, Julie.
Hello, good evening, how are you?
Wonderful, ma'am.
Thank you for having me, I'm excited to be here, and I definitely want to go to the rodeo, that sounds like a thing to do. I'm here to talk about a new facility that Tarrant Area Food Bank is building here in Weatherford, I'm very excited to be here. You may not know, but Tarrant Area Food Bank not only covers Tarrant County, which most people are aware of that, but also 12 additional counties, mostly to the west and to the south, including Parker County. The pandemic brought just a whole new group of people who have never needed the services of the food bank across our 13 county area, to the tune of about 55% higher rates of food distribution than we've ever experienced in our history. So we went from serving, say, 600,000 meals per week to serving over a million meals per week in the 13 counties. And as a result of that, we realized that we need more capacity, so we've outgrown our facility in Tarrant County. But even more importantly, and sadly, we realized that even before the pandemic, we were not serving our outlying counties to the extent that we should. So in these 13 counties, we have 2.9 million people, and of the 2.9 million people, 500,000 are food insecure. We distribute this food through our partner agencies, through home meal delivery programs, through schools, through colleges, through healthcare clinics, just a whole gamut. So we really act as a central clearinghouse, a distribution center. We repackage food that is donated to us, and then we pass it on to these 350 partner agencies. In Parker County alone, there are 18 partner agencies. Last year, we distributed 1.6 million pounds of food, which is equivalent to $2.8 million worth of food, some 942,000 and 1.6 million is expected to date, I'm sorry, to date in FY '21, so you can do a run rate on that and realize that we will surpass what we distributed in FY '20. Right here in Parker County, right here in Parker County, there are 25,000 people in need. This is not who you typically think it might be. It is usually folks who are working jobs, but they're making minimum wage. Maybe it's a single mom who has multiple children, and she's having to work two or three jobs. The pandemic forced a loss of one of those jobs, and all of a sudden, there's a gap in her ability to provide for her family. That's one example, but 25,000 people in need right here in Parker County. So we're looking at constructing a facility, it's right off of I-20, Dennis Road exit, right along Quanah Parker Road. It is an existing facility that was owned by a gentleman by the name of Dan Day. He's building several warehouses out there, 20,000 square feet. We are currently in the process of adding another 10,000 square feet to accommodate food storage, so cooler and freezer space, and are just really excited about working more closely with our partner agencies here in Parker County, along with, with the, with the other counties that are to the south and to the west. And then I'll just encourage you, if you don't know about Tarrant Area Food Bank and you want to learn more, visit our website, there's lots of ways to see us, and we will be bringing a lot of the same services that we provide in Tarrant County out to Parker County and act as a train-the-trainer environment where our partner agencies can come and learn some of these services to bring back to their facilities. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Would you like to introduce the rest of your team before?
Sure, I would love to.
We'd love for you to do that.
I have with me Steve Martin, he will be our local branch manager right here in Parker County, and Dr. Shagranda Traveler, she is our leader over marketing communications and advocacy, so you'll see her again, too.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for being here, appreciate it. Round of applause for Tarrant Area Food Bank. Before we move forward, I'd also like to recognize Patty Williams. Ms. Williams, would you stand and be recognized, please? Patty Williams is, in addition to being one of the leaders at the Roger Williams Auto Mall, running that business, she still finds time to serve on the board for the Tarrant Area Food Bank, and so no doubt about it, you played an integral part in that facility opening in Parker County, so we're thankful for you, citizens of Parker County, and especially the citizens of Weatherford. So thank you so much, thank y'all for being here. All right, counsel, we have one more recognition. We're going to call inside, under five C, we're going to recognize the Weatherford Christian School Lions Baseball Team for their back-to-back Taps Division V State Championship. So counsel, will you join me down below, please? Oh, y'all are all spiffied up and look great, I love it. All right, everybody come on in. Counsel, y'all come on down here. So this is the Weatherford Christian School Division V State Champion Baseball Team. Coaches, y'all come on in. Coach Smith, how are you, sir? Thanks for being here. Stick around here, I'm going to ask you to say a few words. They were here two years ago, didn't get to play last year because of COVID, but they were here two years ago, and I challenged them at that time, we recognize championships in this council chamber, and I recognized them at that time, and I said, when you do this next year, which they didn't get to play last year, you're going to come back and we're going to do this again. So this year is the next opportunity if they had to win a state championship, and they did it, and they did it quite handily, actually. And so we're very proud of them, and, and I want to tell you something, that the team that won two years ago was, was almost all freshmen, is that correct? Okay, so we're still got, most of this crew's coming back for next year, so I have no doubt that you'll be back next year. Am I seeing head shake, say yes? Okay, great, before we recognize you, I want number five, who's number five? Come up here, I'm going to pick on you for a minute, in a real loving kind of way. Tell me your name.
Blake Hyde.
Blake, tell me your last name?
Hyde.
Hyde, I'm going to tell you about Blake, and he didn't know I was going to do this, nobody does, but Blake in the first inning had a pop fly come to him, and he bobbled it and hit the ground. It's not funny, there's a great story to this, this is a strong young man right here. But let me tell you what, he got his head right, he recovered from the adversity, and it wasn't too long, that runner came around second, he got caught, is that called a squeeze play?
Yeah, yes, kind of.
Yeah, well, the runner got caught off the bag, this guy made the money throw to get that guy out between second and third, and let me tell you something, if you don't get your mind right when you're faced with adversity, whether you're young or old, you can't seize those opportunities to get past that. I wanted to recognize you, because I've watched you in person overcome that.
Thank you.
Well done, sir. How about a round of applause for the Weatherford Christian School State Champions? How do you want to do this picture? Squeeze in. We're going to take a couple of pictures, and I'd like Coach Smith to say a few words. Squeeze in, y'all act like you like each other, gentlemen, squeeze in.
Close, so y'all can squeeze in.
Parents, we'll give you a second to come on up in just a second. Big smiles. All right, parents, y'all come on up, take your pictures. You earned it. Y'all come on up if you'd like to take pictures. Somebody's got to break the ice here, thank you, ma'am. All right, everybody get their pictures. Coach Smith, would you like to say a few words, sir? Your mic's hot. Step on up, sir.
So the mayor was right, these guys, every one of these guys overcomes adversity every single day, we, I mean, they, they just do not know the word defeat. So I said it in the newspaper, they quoted it the other day, and I know it's cliche, sometimes we, we may run out of time on the scoreboard, but literally, there's not a time in a game where they don't think they're going to come back and win a ballgame, and testament to each one of these guys and the heart that they show. It, it's a pleasure to coach them, they're not all saints, we go to a Christian school, but we all make mistakes, and I think one of our players didn't hear, but we, we show grace on a daily basis for some of the, some of the mistakes they make, and, and they make some, some doozies, don't they, Dr. Riley? Dr. Riley's here, our head of schools is here, so, and so we, we fight through a lot of that, they're not perfect, but they are great kids, and, and they're, they're a joy to coach. So my coaching staff, I want to recognize Mark Snead, you guys, a lot of you guys from Weatherford, we'll recognize Coach Mike Snead back there.
Yes, you bet.
Todd Jarvis, and you guys remember from two years ago, Coach Winfield was on our staff, so, and you know, there's a good city story to, to, to us as well, we're not able, we, we don't have our own facility to practice at or play games at. So we go up, right up here to Noon Lions, and I work through the Parks Department, David Moat, he is, what a great individual he is, he keeps us on that field, keeps us out of trouble with the Little League, we were able to do both, and we couldn't do it, we wouldn't have a place to practice without some of the city facilities. So thanks to the city, and I'm sure there's a couple of times when I saw one of our, one of Weatherford's finest back in the back, I'm sure there's some times when those boys maybe drive past the speed limit through there, and so even the, the police department cooperates with getting us in and out of practices on a regular basis. So would you say that's true, Blake? But just, we, we couldn't do it without, the, the Weatherford Independent School District, they let us use, for the first time this year, we had a home game. We actually had seven home dates, and we were able to use the ninth grade center field. So the school district working with us to, to use that field, it wasn't being occupied at the time, it's just a good story all the way around for Weatherford. So we, we think all parties involved, we couldn't do it without you guys, and once again, if you guys would, give a round of applause to these boys, they're just hard workers, thank y'all.
Appreciate it, we'll see you next year. Just a closing comment before you gentlemen exit. You know, we've had three examples tonight in our recognitions of what working together will accomplish. Sheriff's Posse Rodeo talked about partnerships with the city of Weatherford and other groups and departments in the city. Tarrant Area Food Bank talked about partnerships with the other nonprofit organizations in our community, and you just shared that other, you know, the public school system's working with you, you're seeing the city of Weatherford working with you. If you're going to have a, a strong community, if you're going to have championships of whatever kind they are, sports, or, or an event, or nonprofits, people have to work together. So I'm so proud of our community tonight, I'm proud of the representation we're seeing of leadership of so many groups, and it's another great night in City Hall, Weatherford, Texas. It's a pleasure for this council to serve all of you.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
All right, mark the calendar, they'll be back in a year. All right, counsel, let's move on to item six on the agenda, which is consent agenda items, we have six A through six L, excuse me, six L, do we hear these as a body, or do we need to pull out any of them individually for discussion?
Oh, good, good.
This is an action item, counsel. Motion approved by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, all the items, ma'am?
Yes.
Councilman Cleveland?
Yes.
Any discussion before we vote on items six A through six L? Hearing none, counsel, we'll vote on those this time. Any K, yay or nay, please? That passes forward to zero. Item eight on the agenda, excuse me, item seven on the agenda is public hearings. Seven A is to hold a public hearing to consider approval of ordinance O-2021-28 to consider an application by TJ Services regarding a request for a conditional use permit for a tool of machinery rental use with outdoor storage at TD, 200 TD Studio Lane, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP 2021-0003. Mr. Katner, good evening.
Good evening. All right, you have in your packets the complete staff report in regards to this conditional use permit request, and this application did go before the Planning Commission at their May 12th meeting, and received a recommendation of seven O to approve the conditional use permit, which was also a recommendation from staff with the nine conditions that are placed on this conditional use permit application. Because it's a conditional use permit application, I, I do want to go over these nine items just so it's clear for the applicants and everyone involved of what those conditions are.
Please do.
Those conditions are, one, all outside parking and storage materials is required to be on an impervious surface. Item two, all surfaces with parking and/or storage of dumpsters shall be maintained from weeds and loose gravel. Item three, leasing of all buildings requires a separate ROR, and potentially separate conditional use permits for each building. Repair, item four, repair of trucks and automobiles or anything else not owned by TJ Services prohibited. Item five, only TJ Services trucks and empty dumpsters may be stored onsite. Item six, TD Studio Lane shall be maintained to be free of potholes. Item seven is outside storage shall be screened from the public view. And items eight is full compliance must be maintained, and if a third violation notice is issued within an eighteen-month period, all operations must cease until compliance is met. And item nine is the conditional use permit will be void if not completed within one year or abandoned for more than 180 days. And so the applicant is aware of all of these requirements, this did go before the commission has recommended approval with these nine items.
Did planning, planning and zoning consider this two weeks ago?
Yes.
Okay, what was the outcome of that?
That was a recommendation of approval with all nine conditions.
Okay, great. Any questions for Mr. Katner? We do have to have a public hearing on that, we can circle back around later if we need to for questions. Let's go ahead and have a public hearing on item seven A. Ms. Noel, any speaker cards on seven A?
No, sir.
Righty. Does anybody from the floor like to speak on item seven A?
Ask if you can answer a question.
Sir, please, yeah, please come forward, that'd be great. Once you get settled up there, if we can have your name and address for the record.
Jack Moore, 7009 Tamrec Road, Fort Worth, Texas. So I'm one of the owners of TJ Services.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, think, a couple of things just to clarify, so we are a, we're a roll-off dumpster company primarily, but we, we do not haul household trash, although that came up during the Planning and Zoning Committee, we haul construction debris, and we don't maintain any construction debris materials onsite. There, obviously, it's just going to be storage purposes for our, for our equipment. The only question that I did have regarding the nine stipulations is around the, the maintenance of the road and the potholes. I think just to be clear, that road is an easement, and it's an unrestricted easement, so it's, we're not the people that have access up and down that road, so I, you know, I, I did have that question in terms of if all of that is on to us to maintain that road, even though there are other parties that, you know, that do use that road. So that, that's the one question that I did have outstanding, everything else seems to be pretty straightforward.
Okay. Mr. Hotop, what's the best way to handle that, sir?
So I'll ask Mr. Katner to come back up.
Mr. Katner, if you can stand, stand by here, sir, we're going to have, I have a couple of questions for you. Mr. Katner, can you address that, please?
Yes, if, if you look at exhibit C in the site packet, let me see if that has one of our, you see the area in blue that is shown on there is the only area that this references that's in the site. So the area north where TD Studio, that easement does go further, this is the only area that they would be required to, to, to be responsible for in maintaining in good condition.
Good, thank you for that. Mr. Moore, does that clarify your question, sir?
Well, yes, yes and no. So I mean, I'm aware of us maintaining that, and again, I'm, I'm not saying, we obviously have a vested interest in keeping the roads, you know, up to speed, these are our corporate offices that we're traveling back and forth. It's just even though the, the part is in blue is not continued all the way to the back of that property that goes through our property, that entire road, there's only one ingress, ingress and egress out of there, and it is used by other parties beside us. But you're, we're the only ones that are going to be maintaining that road.
Okay, and so when did you discover that this clause was in the, this was, this, this was as presented to planning zoning, correct?
Correct.
So when was this discovered by?
Yeah, I, I think for me, it was after that, in terms of that this was not a dedicated easement for, just for us.
Correct.
That this was an unrestricted easement, and there are other parties that use the road beside us.
Counsel?
Question for Caleb, can we, can we, are there other examples where we've put this type of structure in place for other properties where it's unrestricted easements like that?
Yeah, this is, this one's unique in this situation that the uses further up TD Studio Road are all residential use, and so the reason why we put this stipulation with the Planning Commission is that they will have trucks actually running up and down it regularly, and if, if anything, that would be, would probably stress the road or this alley, this private road the most, would be the truck traffic versus the residential traffic. But I think, as is stated, it's a, it's, it's a, it's currently in pretty rough shape as it is right now, and that was one of the conditions of, of doing this, is that they, that some of those items be corrected and, and as part of that, and if that's an issue, then I think that would be something that may need to be considered for the total use of the property if that's not willing to be agreed to.
Who maintains the first part of Studio Lane from the Fort Worth Highway to the property?
Right now, the, it's, I don't know that it's maintained by anyone. And the residents up there, it's all private streets, this is an existing subdivision with a private access, this is one reason why we don't allow these situations to occur in our current, under our current system for this very reason, because no one wants to maintain. to maintain or take responsibility for that. And based on the use and acreage of this, we didn't take it for the full length, we did talk to the applicant about that, of taking it to the full, their property line, but since they're not gonna access it from the north of their property, we reduced the size so they wouldn't have to be responsible, and we thought that was a fair, equitable division of that.
So it's only the piece within their, right away within their property, or is it?
It was highlighted in blue in the application, yes.
It'll be in the ten is a dust-free surface, I mean, that's what part of the, the whole thought behind that is.
That's exactly right.
It's not repaired with gravel.
That's right, there's, one of the concerns that came up from the public hearing was dust and things like that, and that's why they're putting dust-free surfaces for all of the other area.
Counsel, any questions or comments on that specific item?
Um, I don't know, I'm trying to wrap my mind around the, the entry to the road, just because it's gonna have access to others, so I guess I can see the point, and is there a process where we could have them upgrade the road, or get the road to usable standards for what they're trying to do, but then is there some way that could be put into normal maintenance for, like we do any other road, I mean?
It's private roads, it would be, yeah, it would be ours, it would all be theirs, and I think the upgrade process would happen through the site plan process, but it's just, I think what Caleb and company were trying to get to is just, you know, who's the overall maintenance for that, and if they're bringing trucks in, that they're probably gonna be more likely to cause some surface damage, that they'll just be repairing that. We're not necessarily putting in place a standard in which it has to be maintained, just that it has to be a dust-free surface, and generally free of potholes and things like that.
Is that provided, any clarification, Mr. Moore?
No, that's fine.
Say again?
No, I'm clear, thank you.
Okay, okay, and so, related to the other eight conditions, do you read those, you understand those, and you're willing to comply with those?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, great, okay, thank you for being here, appreciate you coming forward, and glad we're able to work out your concern.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments on this item? We do have a public hearing that we have to close, so we'll close that this time on item seven A. Any other questions for staff or discussion among ourselves? Hearing done, we can vote on seven A if that's your pleasure. Motion on the floor for approval by Mayor Pro Tim as presented with the eight conditions.
All nine conditions.
Nine conditions, excuse me, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, all nine conditions.
Any discussion on seven A before we call for a vote? Hearing done, we'll call for a vote on seven A at this time. Please indicate yea or nay. It passes four zero. Seven B on the agenda is hold a public hearing and consider requests for a zone change from PD Plan Development to C one General Commercial with a lot located at three thousand and nine East Bankhead Drive, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH two zero two one zero 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 three. The applicant has withdrawn this application, we will not take any action tonight, counsel. We did post a public hearing, and I know that we have individuals that want to speak in the public hearing, so I'm gonna briefly open the floor for a public hearing on seven B. I do have two speaker cards at this time, is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Mr. Smith, okay, I'll call you up third, is that okay, sir?
What's that?
I'll call you up third, sir, okay?
Okay.
I already have two. Philip Smith, Mr. Smith, come on up, sir. When you get, when you get settled up here, if we can have your name and address, and then we'll allow you three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Philip Smith, two zero three North River Buck Court, Weatherford, seven six oh eight seven. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, I realize the applicant has withdrawn their application, but they have resubmitted the application for review on P and Z, actually the exact same application, so, but, but for tonight, I'd like some clarification around the permitted use of C one zoning in relation to a public utility electrical substation. So, according to page sixty-seven through sixty-nine of the zoning ordinance, I do not read that an electrical substation is a permitted use. What is a permitted use is a municipal facility or utility use, and I read that as municipal facility or municipal utility, which Encore is not, and I'll, I'll tell you how I got to that. So in almost every other zoning classification, electrical substation is specifically called out as permitted, conditional, or specific use. So for example, under agriculture, it's not permitted at all. Residential estate, it's a special use private utility facilities or electrical substation. Same thing for single-family eight point five, single-family seven point five is not permitted. R one, special use private utility facilities or electrical substation. R two, same thing, private utility facility or electrical substation as a special use. Multifamily residences, a conditional use, private utility facility or electrical substation. Same thing for residential lake lot. Manufacturing housing, same thing except conditional. When you get to CBD, CN, and CN one, the only thing listed is permitted municipal facility or utility use. C two, however, lists as permitted, electrical substation public and municipal facility or use. So with both of those being listed there, I think there's a very big difference in municipal facility or utility and electrical substation, and then C three is the same, industrial permitted municipal facility. So city staff has said that intent was for C one, for electrical substation to fall under the permitted use of municipal facility or utility use. I'd like some clarification on that, because there seems to be a disconnect on how we've laid those out. And then second, if city staff is, is correct, and that was the intent, I'd like the council to consider amending this zoning ordinance to include a special use or conditional use permit for municipal facility or utility use under the C one zoning, also potentially for the CBD, CN, C two, and C three. Do we really want Encore to have the ability to put a power plant in the middle of a commercial district? That would allow them, basically anywhere on Main Street, to put a substation if, if that was the intent.
Need you to wrap up, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. I have skin in the game, I have property that's adjoining it, it is C one, which means Encore could have come to me and simply bought my property, and it would have been a permitted use. And so, restricting C one further hurts me, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker card is Mr. Dan Carney, Mr. Carney? Once you get settled up there, if we can have your name and address, if you can limit it to three minutes, we sure appreciate it.
Thank you, Dan Carney, one oh one Shady Creek Court here in Weatherford, seven six oh eight six. I don't live in the city, I live right on the city limit boundary, I actually own the land behind me, which is own property here for over forty years out on Lake Weatherford. My roots are here, born and raised here, I went to junior high in this, on this ground where this building is built now, went to Weatherford College, my mother graduated from Weatherford College, my daughter graduated there, my granddaughter there, the point is, I'm invested. I've spent my entire life and career in business here, here in Parker County. I think that should count for something whenever we're considering another, a four billion dollar corporation coming in, trying to do what they're asking you to do. They have refiled their application, your great Madam Secretary provided me with a copy of what was just filed, and it's, again, it's a C one application, once again, so they're coming back. The reason I'm here to speak tonight is, there's a reasonable chance I won't be here if they bring this up in late June, I'm gonna be out of the state at that time, and so this is my opportunity to at least look you in the eye and express my viewpoint about this. May I suggest, if you have any questions about why your planning and zoning board voted six to one to deny this application two weeks ago, on May the twelfth, go back and review the video that was made of that meeting that night. Mr. Hinton correctly observed, the area is much better suited for other commercial purposes than an electrical substation. Mr. Smith, who just spoke a minute ago, talked about, there, again, another local person who contributes greatly to the local economy through his businesses that he has here, he's gonna be adversely affected. And I have a vested interest, Max Smith and I, we own land right adjacent to this, no question about it, we're very concerned about what it's gonna do to the values out there. You should be concerned, in my view, what is, it's gonna do to one of the most prime development areas that this city has left along that bankhead strip out there. That's a great area that has lots of potential for future development. If we allow Encore to put that giant electrical substation in there, it's gonna drive those property values down, and it's gonna drive desirable tenants away from, from that area. On that same video, we had one of the neighbor ladies there, who already lost the sale of her property, she had a contract, and two days before closing, when they found out about the Encore electrical substation, that went out the window. So, it, it does have some, some dramatic effects, and we, we just feel like, we feel like the same way the Planning and Zoning Committee felt like. There are other places where they can put this facility all along, up and down that transmission line, that doesn't have the impact on what I think is a jewel of an area out there for future development and, and future tax purposes. Why do we want to assist a four billion dollar corporation to provide electrical services, services that are in competition with the City of Weatherford? Like Mr. Tarbay said, he's concerned about what's good for Weatherford, not what's good, and it's on the, it's on the video I'm talking about, he's concerned about what's good for Weatherford, he's not worried about other regions of the state, his focus is on the City of Weatherford, and I encourage that.
Mr. Carney, respectfully, I need you to wrap up, sir.
And I, and I will. There are many other places they can put this facility, it doesn't need to be where I think, where this area can have some really fine development for the City of Weatherford.
Appreciate your comments.
Thanks, y'all, for listening.
Mr. Smith, you wanna come forward, sir? If you will, will you leave your speaker card there or bring it on up? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being here.
I appreciate it, I'm Max Smith.
If you will, will you wait till you get to the podium so we can have it on the record?
All right.
Mr. Smith, once you give us your name and address, you're gonna have three minutes, my friend.
Max Smith, seven oh four West Lake Drive, I live at wonderful Lake Weatherford, where the water's just flowing over the, oops, hope y'all can't hear that, my phone's ringing. But anyway, we're, Dan laid it out pretty good about his, his ties, I was born and raised in Weatherford, right over here at the Medical Surgical Clinic is where, where I was born. I went to junior high here, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, then went on down to South Main, graduated there, been in Weatherford all my life, and this is a great place to live, we raised our kids here, we live at Lake Weatherford, and so we support the City of Weatherford. Dan and I served as elected officials in this, in this city, in this county, right now, Dan and I are both serving on the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, and we, we love this town. I, I think that what Encore's trying to do is take advantage of these big power lines out there, and they, those lines have caused people to adjust to the way they want to use that property out there, and I think that property has thrived, even with those power lines. We've learned to live with that, what they're gonna do is put this substation in, and it's going to cause a mess, I think the commercial value of all that land out there will plunge, and I hate to see that. It's gonna be good for Encore, but I don't think it'll be good for the people that are trying to live out there, and also to put businesses out there. It's, it's my contention that there's gotta be a better place for them to put this substation, no doubt in my mind that they can find that, they've got a bunch of money, they can look all over the place in Parker County, and they can just cherry pick where they want to put this. Right now, they're trying to put it out there where there is just a ton of development up and down Bankhead, on over to Center Point, across the road, and so, I'm, I'm very much against this substation, I don't see any reason for them to put a substation in a location where the City of Weatherford has utility coverage too, in my understanding. So, I'm gonna yield my time back, I'm just speaking my mind today, I know they've withdrawn this application, I feel certain they're gonna circle back and come back and wanna get this done if they can. Thank you for hearing me out.
Appreciate you being here, sir, appreciate all of you being here. Anybody else from the floor on item seven B? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing on that item, council. Again, the application's withdrawn, been withdrawn, so there's no action needed, I'd like to go ahead and move to item eight, if that's okay with y'all, which is regular agenda items, eight A is discuss, consider adoption of the special events ordinance O two zero two one dash two two. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, Shannon Goodman, Director of Parks, Recreation and Special Events. I'm excited to be with you tonight to bring this forward, this is something we've been working on as staff for about eight months now. We've, we've built, really, we, we built a policy and procedures over the last seven years as we've grown our special events department, but we've never formalized it as an ordinance, and so what we have placed in your packet as an ordinance was kind of a combination of what those policies and procedures have built up to. We did some research, we looked at other cities such as Denton, Burleson, Frisco, other places, in, in reference to their ordinances to create this packet. Kind of what I want to do is just talk about some of our goals, and then move into kind of what's in the, in the ordinance, and then highlight that a little bit, and then talk about what we've done to revamp our website to go along. First, starting in our goals, creating this ordinance was based on existing practices, fees, rules, and policies. We built what we thought was reasonable timelines in this application process, that was one of the goals to do. Having buy-in from the City Manager's Office, our police, our fire, emergency management, neighborhood services, special events and transportation is very important to us, all those departments play a role in this special event ordinance, they're all the departments that review every application that comes in, and we get feedback from those, and that's how we set how our ordinance, or how our policies move forward, and how we approve an application. We had a goal of restructuring our event application, you'll see that here in a minute, and then redesigning our website that we felt like would be more informative and easier to navigate for the public and for staff, and a good website also is always a good reference for staff, because sometimes we're not always in, in it, and when we get those questions, it's something we can go to real quick and be able to pull that information up, and just like a citizen, if we can get to it quick and easy, then we know they can too. And then transparency, you know, that's something that we, we try to strive to be transparent as an organization, and so by being transparent in this ordinance and spelling out how the process works was a goal of ours. So what is in the special event ordinance, just some of the highlighted sections that I was talking about, is, we talked about how our fees are applied or applicable, those fees that are in this ordinance are still the same fees that are already on our books that are presented every year to you guys as a fee chart, so there's nothing new, nothing added, it's just formalizing that and referencing those fee charts. We also have an outline of the application process here, so it does give a step-by-step of what we expect when someone's applying for a special application, or putting that application in. We require a site plan, we talk about that, we require the adequate parking, the requirements, so that, making sure that, that public safety aspect is recognized. And then, traffic plan, so, you know, those larger scale events, they affect our traffic patterns, and so making sure those traffic plans are, are put in there, and with site plans, parking requirements, and traffic plans, that's something that city staff, whether it's Michael with our special events, or you're talking to our Public Works Department, or our Police Department, they assist them building those, and pretty much, once you build one for one year, that's your, that's gonna be your traffic plan for every year moving forward unless you modify your event. So they're very easy processes that we walk you through as a, as a group, or as a coordinator does. And then, cleaning, cleanup and compliance, see, is an important thing, you know, we, we wanna, I guess we really emphasize keeping Weatherford beautiful, and part of that is when you host an event, we make sure that it's recognized, that you have a responsibility to the community to clean up after your event, and be in compliance with some of those, so there's some guidelines in there that address that. Selling consumption of alcoholic beverages, there's TABC requirements that are out there, and we follow those TABC requirements, we recommend that anybody that comes in, if you want to host those type of events with alcoholic beverages, you have to apply for that, and you have to submit that to us as part of your, your packet. Public safety requirements, this is, this is a big one, our Police Department, Fire Department, Emergency Management, they review all these applications, and there's some guidelines that they look at based on attendance and, and other things like, how many people are, where it's taking place, is it gonna cause traffic issues, and they use that criteria to evaluate who needs to be on site as far as Police Department, or Fire EMS, or something like that, and how that management service is managed. And then insurance coverage, if it's held on public property, we do have responsibilities, and we want to make sure that they're purchasing the correct insurance, and that it's, everyone's covered in that. And then offenses and penalties is something that we, without an ordinance, you really don't have those type of, I guess, that, that penalty to be able to hold accountability, and, and a good example of that is, something that we're starting to run into a little more as we're growing, is we'll run into a Facebook post, a fan's gonna be held at, say, Marshall Park, and they're wanting to get two hundred people together, and so we'll reach out to them and say, we need you to put a special event. And so we'll reach out to them and say, we need you to put a special event, uh, ordinance, uh, application in. This is going to affect us, it's going to affect the neighborhood. If they refuse to at this time, we really don't have any, any teeth to, to hold them accountable. But with penalties and some offenses and what's in the wording of our special event ordinance, we can actually write a citation for that group and ask them, you know, that would you really pay a citation of not following policy? Or come in and do a free application for a special event so our public safety people are aware that this is taking place, and we can help you manage it safer for our community. And so this ordinance is, like I said, a long time coming, it's something that's going to help us formalize our policies, and we're really excited to see this being presented to you tonight. Couple of notes that it's in your packet. We do have some exceptions, and these are what we're calling our grandfathered in community events. These four parades that are listed are traditional parades here. They're free events. We think that they help foster a strong community, and we want to make sure that these parades always take place and always have a heart right here. We are always out there supporting those. We talked a little, or heard them talk about that with the rodeo and how that's a big part of the community. Same thing goes, the, these parades are kind of those established things that our community can come out to and be a part of, and it's free, and it's just something that we want to make sure it's always recognized, and it's something that the city stays very involved in and partners with. My next slide is just talking about our revamp of our website. So this is a webpage that we're going to release pending our, our approval of a special event ordinance. This is basically just giving dropdowns of kind of everything that's in ordinance, but in an easier format to read. The left-hand side is where you can touch those plus signs, and I'll show you an example. If you look at the public safety recommendations, if I hit that plus sign, it drops down and it talks about site plans, parades, fun runs, street closures, traffic plans. It kind of gives you that real easy layout of what those requirements are for that. If you look at the, the right side column, you see where we've got our experience Weatherford guide, and what that'll do is, we're going to make sure it's, we're, we're working on modifying that to where it's a self, kind of a walkthrough guide of how you fill out that application and all the Q and As that go in that. That's a placeholder for us right now is our Weatherford Experience page, but below that, we have the special event ordinance. Those are all, those three yellow tabs are clickable. You can pull up the ordinance. Heritage Park, as we've all known right here because the council's one that's been supporting that growth of that. We're averaging about forty events a year down there, so we get a lot of requests for the map of that park so people can plan out there. So that's one of the reasons the map's on there. We're going to be able to add traffic, examples of a traffic plan and examples of a site plan on there too. So there, we've got a lot of ability with this new page to be able to create things, and as public ask questions, we get more aware of what they're needing, and we'll put those up as examples. And then the last one is where you would click on your special event application. If you click on that, then what it's going to lead you into, first, you're going to get your contact information with our event manager. You're going to get a questionnaire. You've walked through that questionnaire, it kind of gives us some direction of where you're going. You're going to have three pages following it, excuse me, four pages. Each one of these is representing a page. It's, it's going to be a thorough layout of what your event's going to represent. As you fill this in, you can do it digitally, you can print it off and email it back in. But once you do it digitally, all you've got to do is hit send, and it's instant right there to Michael, who then turns around and distributes this application out to multiple departments for review. We feel like it's going to help our turnaround process quite a bit, and I think there's enough information in here that there's a few callbacks to where he needs to gather information from what he's had to do in the past. So this is really just cleaning up a lot of those questions that's always been asked that require callbacks, additional information from other departments. And so that's what these pages for us represent, and it just is much cleaner layout than what we've had in the past. So with that, I just wanted to take any questions you might have and see if I can answer those for you.
Great presentation. Any questions for Mr. Goodman on item eight A, counsel?
When the permit process overlaps a state road, so most of our parades are on state highway, is that an additional permit that they have to pull with the state to use that road?
On a state highway, yes. Well, Peach Festival's an example of that, where Manny presents every year that they're getting permission from the highway department. That's an overlap of maybe side street closures of what we do in-house with our, with Public Works Department.
So will it be in y'all's how-to, basically? Will there be a note about making sure they acquire any? Because I know a lot of times, stuff like that.
Correct. And, and a lot of that, and a lot of that, like you said, right now is mouth-to-mouth, just talking with Michael. And, you know, if, if y'all have ever worked with Michael, he can, he, he can walk people through it so easily and make them understand and help them guide through that process. But you're right, as we build that how-to, those are things like that that need to be referenced, and, and those are good points to make.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's in there so somebody didn't, oh, well, pulled the permit, and then they missed a piece that was a different agency, and then they're frustrated.
Yes, sir.
That's a great point, Mr. Cleveland. Any other questions or comments? I did have a couple. I, I've studied the fee schedule. It is extremely reasonable. It's, it's very clear in the fee schedule. You're just trying, we're trying to cover our costs. And more than that, and I appreciate, you know, you just being, we have to have some structure and some guidelines, but you're also very aware that some organizations have a hard time with that, and it shows that in your fee schedule. What I'm really proud of is the special event exemptions. You know, your department's showing that you recognize a lot of the hometown and the heritage things that have been around for a long, long time, and, and are exempting those from a lot of the, the fees for transportation, public works, and public safety. What a lot of the public doesn't understand, it's legitimately extremely challenging to put on a parade down Main Street.
Absolutely.
It takes a lot of TP and W effort, it takes a lot of public safety effort, and with that is a lot of cost. So thanks for being willing to reinvest in, in our community and in our citizens. Parades are fun, they're free for the citizens to show up to. Everybody's happy, so I always like a parade, so.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?